Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Kevin Calca, the Chair of the Norfolk Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I think you guys are present and can hear me, right?
Yes.
Judith Lozardi?
Here.
Very good. So this open meeting of the Norfolk Select Board is being conducted kind of remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. With that, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Blythe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Of course. Tonight, we've got COVID-19 updates followed by public comment. There are three action items which all involve approval of use of Town Hill. First for the Norfolk, excuse me, not all of Town Hill. First is the Norfolk Grange's 12th Annual Clean and Green Event in late April. Approval of the Federated Church's use of Town Hill for their Easter sunrise services. And the Norfolk Farmers Market is looking to come back and have their program again this year using Town Hill on Wednesdays starting in June. Discussion items include reviewing the Fire Department's FY22 budget for which the Chief is with us, to discuss the status of the warrant for the May 8th Annual Town Meeting, to discuss applications for appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There are two openings. To discuss posting of board correspondence, Town Administrator updates. There are three warrants to approve and there are, I think there's a set of minutes for tonight.
Very good, thank you, Blythe. So our first item this evening is our COVID-19 updates.
So we've had a slight uptick in cases in the last two weeks. We had 15 new cases this past week and 18 the week before. So while we're still in the yellow zone, our rate has gone from 12% up to 16.4. I think it's tracking with what's generally happening in the Commonwealth. But still, we were hoping we were headed for the green zone and yellow seems to be where we're at at the moment. So I know the Board of Health is a little concerned. Just want to remind everybody that, you know, using masks and social distancing and all those sorts of things, you know, it's tough. It's getting nice out there. People are a little tired of, you know, the drill, but if, you know, our residents have done really well over this whole time and ask them to keep working it so that we can try to continue to have our numbers go down, especially as people continue to get vaccinated. And then just haven't gotten any firm details yet on exactly how the ARP funds can be spent. We're waiting for the check and waiting for the details across the organization. So we'll give you more details on that when we get them.
Awesome, thank you, Blythe. Do you have anything else on COVID? Does CC have any questions or comments related to COVID, Anita?
No.
I think it is worth noting that with a little bit of a spike in numbers to what we're used to seeing or the trend that we were on, it is a 14-day trailing metric. So we likely will see something similar next week, even if things start to go down. But just, uh, don't ask me how it's going to go. Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody in attendance. If you have any questions or comments related to our COVID-19 updates, please use the raise hand function at this time. We'd be happy to acknowledge you. Devin Howe, good to see you, sir. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Chair and all members of the Board. As Chris said, or Kevin said, my name's Devin Howe and I'm a former resident of Norfolk. As the Board may remember, I served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for approximately four years and resigned this past past October. Admittedly, I moved to the city of Cambridge. I greatly enjoyed my time on the Board, but it was time to move on. And I just wanted to just discuss with the Board just something I noticed the other day. So the town doesn't know, but prior to joining the Board, I recently graduated college and was beginning my professional development in civil engineering. I really didn't at the time realize the level of commitment that was required to be an active member of the Board. Just even as an associate member, I was spending many days and hours really reviewing the plans and documents and everything else that was sent to the Board. And really, one of the biggest benefits of joining that Board was just really being mentored by Mr. Kaliza and Mr. Christopher Weider. Really, I've worked through a lot of different municipalities throughout the Commonwealth and their demeanor is just really unmatched. They do a great job handling the Board meetings and, you know, I think while, you know, I didn't really always agree with everything they had to say, you know, throughout our time together, we made equitable decisions that were always in the best interest of the town. And I'm just frankly, I'm a little bit disappointed that this past, on March 17th, I learned that Mr. Weider had resigned from the zoning Board due to this Board's decision to elect a new Animal Inspector without discussion or regard for Mr. Weider's animated and active role as the Animal Inspector for many years prior. While it is this Board's decision to make at the recommendation of the Town Planner, I just don't believe that this decision reflects the character of the town at Norfolk. I'm just, I'm really disappointed that as someone who had put an immense amount of their personal time into the town, that they would really just be betrayed by this Board. Had I still been on the zoning Board at the time that Mr. Weider had announced this, I probably would have immediately resigned in protest. I do not believe that this Board's decision was in the best interest of the town. And I feel that Chris's decision to leave the zoning Board was, while upsetting for me and I think a great disappointment for the town, it was warranted. And I felt it was my duty to join this Select Board meeting tonight and express my displeasure with this Board as well as the Town Manager for their decision a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Howe, be sure to file that under COVID-19 Updates as that was the agenda item that we were currently on. But given your service to the ZBA, I figured I'd allow that to go through as I imagine you were intending that to be part of our public comment period this evening. As such, we can let you go your full three minutes. So we appreciate your comments. I'm sorry to hear that your opinion of the decision that was made last week is not favorable. But as that is not a current agenda item and a decision that was made in relation to the employment of an individual here in town, we will hear your comment, take note of it, and be moving on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open it up one more time for anybody who may have comments related to COVID-19, questions or comments related to COVID-19. Seeing none at this time, so we'll be moving on to our next item this evening, which is our public comment period. This is the period of the meeting where anybody who is in attendance can share with the Board about something that is within the scope of the Town Administrator or the Select Board for around three minutes. If anybody has anything to share this evening, we ask that you please use the raise hand function at this time. I am not seeing any hands at this time. If you can't find the raise hand function, you can wave furiously. Not seeing any of those either, so we'll be moving on. Our first item for action this evening is to please consider approval of the Norfolk Grange's 12th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup on Saturday, April 24th, 2021, from 10 to 3.
In your packet is some information from the group that is planning this 12th Annual Event where they asked the town to provide them with a roll-off dumpster delivered to the Grange so that people, and they hand out bags, this group does, for people to go out and pick up trash around road sides or public areas and put it in the dumpster so we can haul it away and get rid of it. I think it's a wonderful event, really appreciate people's time to do that on behalf of the community. And the cost and the effort by Public Works to facilitate that is minimal. So we would recommend approval of that again this year and thank them very much.
Good. CC, any questions or comments?
No, seemed pretty straightforward. I think it's fabulous and thank you for doing it.
All right, with that, I would move that the Board vote to support the Norfolk Grange's 12th Annual Clean and Green Townwide Cleanup on Saturday, April 24th, 2021, by authorizing the provision of a dumpster for trash removal. Do we hear a second?
Second.
A second for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of the Federated Church's use of Town Hill on Sunday, April 4th, for the Sunrise Easter Service.
Yes, the Church would like to be back this year to gather approximately less than 20 people is what they tell me to have their Sunrise Easter Service on this Sunday, April 4th. I guess they've been doing it for quite a number of years and had to cancel last year because of COVID, but they'd like to have it again this year and they're asking for your approval.
CC, any questions?
No, that seems also pretty straightforward.
I agree.
With that, I would move that the Board vote to approve the Federated Church's use of Town Hill on Sunday, April 4th, for the Sunrise Easter Service.
Second.
A second for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And our last one is to please consider approval of the Norfolk Farmers Market use of Town Hill on Gazeebo on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., including setup and breakdown times of 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. from June 16th, 2021 to September 22nd, 2021.
Another event that we're glad to see able to consider coming back again this year is the Farmers Market. It's another event that people have enjoyed and gets people out on Town Hill and also, I guess, connects people with the library who tend to do both at the same time. So they have requested to use Town Hill and the Gazeebo during those times between mid-June and late September. They're planning to have, usually, you know, not a large group of farmers, but it varies from week to week. They're planning to keep appropriate protocols in place with hand sanitizer and spacing people. They may use some pop-up tents, but small enough that don't require any permits. And again, we think it's a wonderful event and we recommend approval.
Good. Questions, CC?
I don't have any questions. I just want to echo what Blythe said. I love the Farmers Market. I really do. I don't know why. I mean, I know why, but it just, it's really cool.
Really cool.
She's echoing my statement as well. We're all echoing each other.
I think the gentleman in the meeting is here in case you had any questions about it.
So if there's anything you'd like to add, so go right ahead.
No, I think it's pretty, pretty much clear, clear and cut and clear there. Yeah, I have the stuff, the, uh, what I wrote up here, the use application here, and I think we really covered all of it. I know we have to talk with the DPW and I can get in touch with the library and make sure that that timing is good with them. The only questions I had was just about parking and what is ideal for that.
So the concern, the only concern that the library had is if they're open, then clearly their parking is, you know, a priority for their patrons. So I think what they'd like to do is have a way that we can mark off maybe 10 spaces around the area in front of the library so it's, you know, the shortest distance for people to go to the library. But their parking closer to Independence Drive is probably a good solution as well as along Liberty Lane. And Town Hall is a little bit further of a walk to come up behind our building, but it's never usually full these days. So I think people can plan to park there, perhaps some of the vendors once they've set up. Something along those lines.
Yeah, sounds good to me. And as I've said before, we don't anticipate it being a giant market. So I think if there is parking issues in the first few weeks, I'm sure we could deal with them.
I think we can.
Very good. Yeah, thank you so much for bringing this back. I mean, what a great sign that, you know, we're getting back to the some semblance of normal again, right?
Yeah, definitely. We're excited. We're hoping by having it on a Wednesday, we'll be able to get a couple new vendors. Saturday's a very busy market day, so we had a hard time getting vendors to come. So I'm hoping to get maybe like a seafood truck and a couple more exciting folks to hopefully join the team.
Fantastic. Thank you so much again.
All right, thank you, guys.
With that, I would move that the Board vote to approve the Norfolk Farmers Market use of Town Hill and Gazeebo on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. from June 16th, 2021 to September 22nd, 2021.
Second.
Hearing a second for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous as well.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks. Have a good night, guys.
You as well. All right, our next item this evening is to please discuss the Fire Department's proposed FY22 operating budget. Welcome, Chief. How are you doing tonight?
Doing well, doing well.
We are all looking forward to your presentation. Blythe, would you like to lead us in?
Yes, so we kept it short and sweet. We grabbed the one slide that we used for the Advisory Committee last week and since it was just one slide, we didn't, we didn't plan to project it. It's in your, it's in your packet.
So just turn back around. I think what she's trying to say is-
I think that's what, it's very subtle, but I got it.
But as I thought about it more as we prepared for today, I thought you might want a little more detail. So hand it out with your packets on the table is a copy of the detailed breakdown of the salary changes. And that's where the, all the changes are in the budget. There's no changes in the expense budget, but the second page after the salaries has a breakdown of all of the expense accounts and the things that we spend money on in Fire Department, in case you'd like to go over any of those. So that, I would like to turn it over to the Chief to tell you about why there are changes in this budget for next year and answer any questions that you have. Chief?
All right. So as you can see, primarily, our budget increases due to the contractual increases in the collective bargaining agreement. One of the bigger ones to note is this year, the holiday incentive pay kicks in and that accounts for, you know, a fairly significant chunk. And then the other large, large item outside of the 3.5% COLA is this year, our share of the SAFER Grant for the last 15 weeks of the fiscal year goes up from the 25% share to 65%, which, you know, creates an additional $21,250 that we have to account for in our budget. And, you know, pretty much everything else has stayed, you know, as Blythe indicated, expenses, we were able to do level fund. There's no change in expenses at all. Everything that is part of the increase is attributed to the collective bargaining and contractual obligation.
Just for Anita's benefit, because you weren't here when this contract was settled, it was, we knew at the time that there was, it was going to add expense and that was concerning, but we were, the town was addressing a situation where we were training people and then they were leaving for jobs where they were making more money. So we train them and they leave, train them and they leave. And so we had to make a step forward to align what we offered more with what those were. So it's been, we saw this both in police and fire. So next year, we'll be renegotiating these contracts and I think we're more in the zone than we'd ever been and so hopefully we'll get past that hump. But that's really what's driving this and the SAFER Grant, which we knew over time we'd have to eventually pay for those new firefighters.
Thank you.
So like I said, we can make it, I don't know if we can make it more complicated, but-
I'm sure you could.
It's really what-
Yeah, no, I think you could probably.
Would you mind just talking a little bit about the impacts of the SAFER Grant, not only this year, but what we'd be looking at in the next couple of years as well?
Sure, Chief, if you might.
Yeah, so next year, kind of similar to the scenario for this year, we will be, we'll have to account for the 65% for the bulk of the year and then the last 15 weeks will have to account for the entire cost share of those personnel. So, you know, our budget will have to increase incrementally next year as well. But after next year, we will pretty much, we will be absorbing the entire cost of those personnel. So we should hit that point where we'll have that number. And I'm sure after, you know, it'll be more of a set number based on the collective bargaining that's forthcoming next year to be renegotiated.
And that is three individuals or two individuals?
It's two individuals.
Two, thank you. And I imagine that our staffing with the SAFER Grant right now is the staffing where we want to be, that we've determined is ideal for the department and the size of the town, correct?
Yes, we are at four per shift, which is, you know, allows us to meet what NFPA standards recommend. We have four people on shift 24/7.
Thank you, Chief.
We also don't really have room for anymore at the moment at the station, so that's part difficult where we would put them if we had more.
You mean the fire station building committee isn't done yet?
They just started last night.
They didn't have a decision in a direct path after one meeting?
They asked great questions and they're off and running.
Well, that's great to hear. CC, do you have any questions or comments related to the fire budget? Anita? One thing I did just want to call out, of course, because I put this whole comparative together. If you look at how efficiently our Fire Department runs compared to our neighbor towns, the average is a 5.2% spend of total revenue, total expense for towns that we're on the border of. Norfolk is at 4.4. So very efficiently run, great department. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm sure they've asked for the difference.
Not the reason why we call those numbers up. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody in attendance this evening who has any questions related to the fire station budget. Please use the raise hand function at this time. I am not seeing any here. Blythe, anything you'd like to leave us with?
Nope. I think next week, we're going to talk about DPW and wrap up on any other questions that the Board has so we can start to make some decisions about finalizing the budget. Todd's, or anything you'd like to add?
None at this time.
Very good. Well done, Chief. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is to please discuss the status of the warrant for the May 8th Annual Town Meeting, Blythe.
Thank you. So the warrant is a bumper 28 pages at the moment. And I just wanted to go over five or six things that have changed and are in process so you can stay up to speed about that. In Article Number 7, which is about the wastewater treatment plant budget, we have met and have reduced that slightly. We're going to be proposing that to the users in a meeting in the next couple of weeks so that they're aware of what will be coming when the budget passes at Town Meeting. But we looked hard at some of those expenses and have reduced them a little bit. So there'll be a little bit of a change there. At our last meeting, the Board discussed the animal regulations and decided we want to change the penalties and fine structure. The version in your book hasn't changed yet. I'm waiting for those changes from Town Council. I'll have them this week so we can go over them next week. Because my goal is at next week's meeting, which is the last time we meet before we sign it, that you see a very, very, very close to final version of that. So those are coming. One thing we also identified is that in the back of our general bylaws is a fee schedule and an appendix. The license fees for dogs are in the back there and we had intended with this to move them into Article 13. So Town Council's also working on amending that article so that when we put it in Article 13, we don't also have it lagging behind in the back and a different schedule. So there's conflict. We may have to do it in a separate article and if we do, we'll ask you to open the warrant next week to add the article and then close it. So just want to keep you up to date on that. All of the B1 articles are in here, Articles, those are 21 to 23. There are, all of the Articles are bundled so that the first Article 21 is a simple majority vote to change the parking and the density, which is allowed under the new Housing Choice Bill that passed the state. Then there's a much, Article 22 is a much longer article which changes all the other sections of the B1 zone that the Planning Board wants to address. Those all would pass by a two-thirds majority if it passes, that's the quantum of vote. And then the third Article 23 is the map change. So if everything changes, then the map, the third thing that would be adjusted. The Planning Board is having their public hearing on these and their other zoning articles on April 13th. So if you're looking for an extra meeting to go to, that's one I would suggest. So that's what's going on with those. Article 26, just a typo on my part, I hadn't removed. Westfield Drive, these are the street acceptances. That one, that street's not ready to move forward, so I should have removed it from the description. And then, as you know, we received two citizen petitions. One about selling some land on Fruit Street and the other is a change in affordable housing and inclusionary zoning. The petitioner for Fruit Street has let me know that they will not be able to gather the 12 signatures that they, for the people that had submitted it. So I can't, I have to put it on the warrant because if they don't withdraw it, it has to stay. It's not in the appropriate format for a warrant, but I haven't been able to convince them that that would be helpful to get the 12 signatures so we can take it off. So it's not in here now and I need to put it back on. So the warrant will get a little bit longer unless, unless there's some, we could find a way to resolve that. So I just wanted to let you know. And I've let the Advisory Chair know that, I don't know if they want to take it up or just IP it indefinitely postpone ahead of time. So that's what's up about that. So as I say, we're going to make these other adjustments, get you a final version next week. I don't expect any other changes at this point. Nothing else to come off and nothing else to be added except, let's say, one item related to the animal regulations. So happy to take any questions or-
Anita, any questions, comments related to the Articles for the warrant?
I do not.
CC? I was going to talk a little bit about the B1 proposals since I am the Board's liaison to that committee. It sounds like it would be better suited though until after the Planning Board's public hearing. We did, there was a video that was created by the B1 that we sent out to committees so that they wouldn't have to sit through a presentation each time they watched it. I don't know if that's been shared with this Board, but it might be helpful to send that out, share it, and then have a discussion about it instead of me taking you from two and a half years ago to now. But there is a lot that's going into these, a lot that has gone into these two Articles. So I think it would be worth a more in-depth discussion. so I think it would be worth a more in-depth discussion if that was of the interest of the rest of the Board.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so we'll get the video-
It's about a half an hour long.
Yep.
I think it's very helpful.
That's the short version.
That is.
All right, thank you very much, Blithe. I'll open it up to anybody in attendance. If you have any questions related to the Articles for Town Meeting Warrant, please use the raise hand function at this time. Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead, sir.
Will the video that you were just talking about be accessible to citizens also, or is it only for committee members?
It will 100% be available to the residents as well.
I believe it's on the website, but I will double check. I think it got put up-
Thank you.
I think it got put up there.
And actually, if it is on the website, if you could somewhere send, make a pointer to it available, I'd appreciate that.
You're right, it is under the What's New section, because it was an automated posting created on Facebook, yep.
Yep.
So it should be under the What's New section on the splash page of the website, David.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. I don't see any other hands at this time, so we'll be moving on to our next agenda item, which is to please discuss accepting applications for appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So we have two openings on the ZBA, one as a full member position and one an associate member position, so I wanted to bring those to your attention and ask, ask you if you want to open up, I mean, we have advertised for the full position, but I had overlooked the fact there was also an associate opening, and see how we'd like to go forward with trying to fill those, whether you want to put it on the agenda in the next week or so, if we get any applications to have the Board consider them, how you'd like to handle that.
I mean, from my perspective, I think we absolutely would want to get people to populate the rest of this committee. They have a very important position here in town to manage some of the most directional 40B proposals that come across. We would hate to see them be shortchanged, so I say absolutely, let's open it up for any applications, and as soon as our next meeting, I would say let's put an agenda item to see what we have and to do a review. We'd had a fantastic turnout of people with incredible civil engineering experience from our Fire Station Committee call.
Yes.
So I think it'd be great to reach out to them, see if they'd like to contribute, or anybody else in town, but I think that we should absolutely do that as soon as possible. Cece, Anita, thoughts?
That sounds great.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree that I think that you should let people know that they're available. Typically, how long do we give people, right? Like, how, how long, we did, you're right, the bench was very deep for the folks for fire. Was it about the same amount of, I'm mixing my metaphors, runway in terms of, from announcement to meeting?
So we did put the, we did put announcement on the website-
I keep forgetting that it's next week and not the week, like, I kept thinking in my head that, you know, I saw this on the agenda, I was like, oh yeah, then it'll, it'll give us two weeks, and you kept saying next week, and I kept thinking, she's misspeaking, it's not next week, and then I looked at my calendar, and I'm like, it's next week!
We did put announcement on the website a week or so ago-
Okay, that was-
-that we did have an opening-
All right, that was my only-
...with the application. I certainly can reach out to the folks who had, had reached out to us about Fire Station and make them aware that there's an opportunity, and if, I mean, as long as you get them before 7 o'clock on Tuesday, we'll bring them to you.
Great.
As sooner, we'll put them in your packet on Thursday, so-
Thank you, that was it.
Thank you, Blithe. Our next item is to please discuss website posting of Board correspondence. Does anybody on the Board have anything of interest or note come across over the course of the last week?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I thought there was one interesting inquiry about Town Council's position-
Oh!
-and how they operate here in town. I thought that'd be of interest to the community.
Yes, that's correct, yes, that's right.
I don't know, do you disagree or agree?
No, I completely agree. I got sort of side-dazzled by the gentleman who does not live in the town, reading from his script during the COVID, and it kind of just sort of commentary, it kind of just threw off my whole meeting, in terms of trying to keep track of the bogies, but yes, yes, I agree.
Very good, so I will prep that and send that over to Todd for posting. Our next item this evening is-
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is there any way to tell how many hits that particular section, the, the sort of wall gets, how many times people visit?
There should be a click counter for any button that's put on the website, but I'm really going outside of my knowledge of how websites are structured, so-
I'm going to jump onto that and say I think there is two, but I have no idea how to do it.
I was just, that was just, you know, curious. To your point, you had talked about a week or so, maybe, however the last meeting was, that you knew that there were people who were sort of availing themselves of that, rather than having to engage in the public records requests, and I've actually come across a person or two who've done the same, so I thought that was great, but then I was just more interested in terms of the sort of secondary or tertiary prophylactic nature, which doesn't yet seem to be taking effect, but right, sometimes, you just got to keep at it, and so I was curious if there was a counter or anything, so you could see. Wow, that's just curious.
Yep, we'll look.
I don't know if it's a should be or a could be. I think you can put a counter on, but I don't know if you're, I think it's definitely possible to put a counter on.
Todd will know, right?
He will.
Perfect. All right, so our next item this evening are our Town Administrator updates, Blithe.
Yes, a couple of things to talk about. So Franklin and Rantham and I have, and MAPC's support have been meeting almost daily, and we're ready to turn in the Tri-Town or the Metacomit Regional Health District Public Health Excellence Grant application on Thursday, so looking forward to that. We're very excited about what that will do for health services overall in our three communities. Secondly, our DPW staff and Scott will be with Town Council in a injunction hearing, court hearing before Superior Court Judge tomorrow regarding Lake Street. As you know, the, one of the property owners filed an injunction to have us stop doing any of the work that we're obligated to finish out there. Filed for injunction, we have responded, and that hearing is tomorrow 2 o'clock, so hoping to prevail, but, and resolve that and get that project behind us. I occasionally get questions about what's going on with Southwood Hospital. It's been quiet right now. We understand that the new owner is spending their time working on the environmental issues. They have not reached out to us to talk about the development in any way, so there's no, nothing to review, nothing to discuss at this point, but we certainly want to make sure we keep people aware of that when there are things to talk about. That's important. And then lastly, as the Chief knows, we were both, well, all three of us, including Todd, was at the kickoff of the Fire Station Building Committee last night. They had their first meeting. I think they're going to be a terrific group, they asked some really good questions. Because of their backgrounds in engineering and architecture, they were able to focus on the sorts of things that we need to dig through our files to find from previous work. Some of the work we already did will be very helpful to being out of the gate quickly, and we're going to meet again in two weeks on the 12th to approve the request for qualifications to put out in the street for an owner's project manager, that's the first step, and hopefully get that underway quickly, and bring that to, the firm to you, to approve, you know, in a, in a couple of months. So, they're planning to meet on the second Tuesday, second Mondays of the month, unless there's a reason for more meetings, and at times there will be, so, those are my updates.
I, I think it, it's worth saying too, you know, one of the best comments I think I saw in the meeting last night was somebody saying, this is fantastic how this has been structured, like, we have guidance, we have scope, we have direction, we have all this, it feels like we can just kind of hit the ground running, so kudos, Blithe, to you for really teeing it up and setting them up for success. Thank you.
Well, they're going to be a good group, so. Chief, any, any thoughts?
I absolutely agree, I think we're definitely going to benefit from the knowledge and the, the professional guidance and, and the experience that they have is really going to help us with this project. You could see that last night with the, the questions they asked, and with, you know, some of the requests that they made for information and things of that nature, that they're very, very well-versed in this area and invested in the town and want to see this project be a success.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Any questions or comments on Blithe's updates, Cece?
No, it's all good stuff, though.
Anita?
No, not at all. Thank you.
Anybody in attendance, if you have any questions or comments related to our Town Administrator updates, please use the raise hand function at this time. Seeing none, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to approve some warrants. I would move that the Board approve five warrants for the period of March 16th, 20, through the 23rd, 2021, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Friendly amendment, there's three, I didn't change that sentence, I realize. My bad, sorry about that.
She was testing you, and I'm sorry to say you failed.
I am totally wrong, I'm going to need to read whatever she puts on here.
I'm sorry.
She puts curses on here, I would read them without even thinking.
That's awesome.
All right, so with a friendly amendment to three warrants for the period of March 16th through 23rd, do we hear a second?
Second.
Hear a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous. Anita, would you take it away for some minutes approval?
Yes, I move that the Board approve the minutes of March 16th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
Hearing a second, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that does it for our agenda.
Oh my gosh, shocking.
Ludicrous speed!
I feel like there's something that we missed a page or something.
Oh, wow!
Blithe, is there anything else that you'd like to throw in or add ahead of our next meeting?
We promised you a longer agenda next week, how's that?
No, no.
Sorry.
Sean's birthday next Tuesday.
Ooh.
I was sorry.
My mother's birthday next Tuesday.
Thank you, it was rough.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it was awful, but thank you.
It seemed like it was awful.
Yeah, well, especially, I mean, you know my guys, and they were all out playing with him, and then trying to revive him, and it was just basically-
I'm so sorry.
-a poop show, cleaning up my language for the television viewers, and then we, to your point, today, yesterday, we welcomed into our home a puppy-
Oh!
-because there's not enough going on.
That's right.
Yeah, and I had, I just told him before I left, I'm like, you need to stop hydrating him. I'm like, we're just going to leave a big old thing, and it's just everywhere, all of it, and I'm like, I'm glad to see it's clear, but we need to shut it down and get this thing under control, so, but thank you.
What kind of puppy?
He is, he's, he's an Anatolian Shepherd, so, he's, he's a floofy from a farm, sort of like Anatolian, like, I don't know, there may be a little, he's, we decided, so Buddy was a rescue, and we didn't know, he was clearly a Golden, but you just don't, I suspect a puppy mill, and, because there were a couple of other sort of genetic issues, and so I suspect also that that's what happened, and so my guys were like, we just, it can't be, and I'm like, I know, just, you know, your everyday, ordinary, who, who's had puppies, kind of, you know, a little bit of this and a little bit of that, that's a hard ear, and so we found somebody who is, he actually, I mean, if he really is, we're going to need a bigger fence, but he's very sweet and very fluffy and very hydrated.
Very hydrated.
The name is TBD, there's lots of-
Discussion.
Oh, that's exciting.
Voting, voting and discussion.
Yeah, and lobbying, and then like undercutting other people's choices with, it's, it's an interesting time, but thank you.
Names are important.
They are important, they are important, so, it's all good stuff, thank you.
Awesome.
So Cece, anything else for the meeting tonight?
No, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anita?
I thought we weren't-
Anita and I were like, we're just-
We have to fill at least an hour, so it's okay.
I thought we were adjourned, no, I do not have anything else, I apologize.
No worries, Todd?
I'm good.
Chief?
I'm good.
All right, so I'll just end by saying, I think that I speak on behalf of all parents in Norfolk, that we eagerly look forward to return to elementary school next week, and we wholeheartedly thank the administration and everything that they've done, the plan to get us to this point. I know the kids are very excited, I know many of the teachers are very excited, so just everybody, I think, is really looking forward to, again, another step to a return to some sense of normalcy next week, so, thank you very much to everybody who dedicated their time to the effort.
I, I want to chime in and add, because I, I know, we've got a couple of minutes left, that I watched the school, and I think I told you this, and I was telling you, that I watched the school committee meeting last week, and it was, this may seem silly, and obviously it's a little inside baseball, and then perhaps you wonder why there is that I have like, oh, that was a great meeting, or that wasn't a great, this was a phenomenal meeting, it was smooth, and, and everybody came with presentations about like all of the plans that were just so, I don't know, like, it was just amazing, it was like, everything that they were going to do and how they were going to do it, and it was going to be no big, you know, like, and it was just like the level of confidence that it instilled in me as a parent and as a person who's involved in town governance, it was, it was a great meeting with a lot of great information, and so if people are still wondering what's going on or how they arrived at particular decisions that they arrived at, I recommend they go back and they watch that meeting, because they had slides going, but they were sort of, you know, filling in the blanks of the slides, and really a lot of confidence in the people leading this town's academic growth, so, it was pretty cool. It was, it was, yeah, everyone sort of living through the last year, this is one of those benchmark moments, and so, you know, it was a big deal, for whatever it was, a little misty.
Thank you for sharing that.
It was pretty awesome.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have a great school committee-
And I need a new hobby, but that's a different story.
Very lucky. All right, so with that, I will move to adjourn this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second, further discussion? Very good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a great evening, thank you so much.